Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Here. Uh, would you please, uh, we're gonna have the, uh, the scouts, uh, lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're proud to have you guys here. Item two on the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September twentieth, two thousand, twenty twenty-one. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held August the third, twenty twenty-one. Item C is approve membership renewal in the amount of five thousand dollars to the Oklahoma Municipal League, uh, for management services. Item D is accept donation on a permanent drainage easement from Gary Paul Mayfield for the purpose of maintaining the drainage channel along the North Fork, uh, Little River, uh, crossing, uh, excuse me, Ethel River, crossing the property located at three oh nine North, uh, Bryan Avenue in exchange, uh, for the, excuse me, in exchange, the area southwest and adjacent to the southwest side of the said drainage area channel easement located on this property. And item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of three million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars, twenty-eight cents.
Would make a motion that we approve the consent docket.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive a report from Select Actuarial Services and accept the annual actuarial report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, we have used Select Actuarial Services for about twenty-one years now, and they've always done a great job for us. And I believe we have, uh, Betsy Southworth here remotely. She's gonna be Zoom. There she is. She's gonna be here. She's gonna go ahead and give us a summary of the results of the, uh, of the study.
No sound.
Yeah, we, we can't hear you.
Give us, yeah. Still no sound.
No, we cannot hear you.
How about a motion to accept the, uh, actuaries?
Can we give them a few minutes to work on? We come back to it?
We can do that.
Yes, let's go ahead. Move to item, maybe move to.
Okay, we'll move on to item four. Item three will be postponed. Ren, do we need to take a vote on postponing it? Moving it to the back of the agenda? Okay.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good for the.
Okay, do we have a?
Make a motion that we move item three to the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, it'll be moved to the back. Item number four is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a twenty twenty-two Ford Explorer four-wheel drive X L T as a staff vehicle for the Animal Control Department from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars using state contract number S W zero three five. Yes, sir.
Mayor and Council, all the vehicles in, um, animal welfare are the field vehicles that they use, um, in the field. So, um, if they have to go somewhere to training and things like that, they tie up one of those vehicles. So at the moment, they don't have anything. So the purchase of this vehicle will allow them to be able to travel, go to trainings in that without tying up a field vehicle. So we recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and now a second. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is reconsider action previously taken by the city council on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one before approval of a budgeted replacement server and additional hard drive enclosures for body camera video storage from Davenport Group using N A S P O Oklahoma State Contract Code Number C, uh, was skip all the zeros, C five three eight or nine eight, excuse me. And I'll go, better go ahead and read them, otherwise it won't be legal. C zero 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 five three nine eight by amending the amount of the purchase from thirty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars to thirty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Mayor and Council, as the item stated, this was previously approved by council, and we just had a mix-up on the amount, so we're just asking for authorization to spend the extra two thousand and two dollars. Recommend approval.
Okay.
Or make a motion that we approve the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Appreciate it. Uh, would you call for the vote, please? There's no other discussion.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of a quote from I A Pro Blue Teams in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars as lowest responsible qualified contractor for budgeted software for the police department to improve the documentation of internal investigations, centralized and streamlined the trafficking of complaints, use of force, pursuits and accidents, as well as to aid in compliance with state and national accreditation standards.
Mayor and Council, this is a software system that has been used for a variety of, uh, by a variety of agencies in the Oklahoma City Metro for a number of years. Um, what it does is takes, uh, all, uh, several processes and consolidates them into one repository, uh, so that we can have better tracking, uh, better internal tracking and better oversight of, uh, high liability areas such as accidents, uses of force, uh, complaints, pursuits and other things mentioned in there as well. Uh, one interesting point about this is it also, uh, tracks our commendations. So it'd be a system that we would use for commendations as well, so it's not all negative. And one of the other more interesting items is it will provide us, uh, it will provide executive staff at administration alerts. So if there's changes in an officer's behavior, uh, for example, we have an officer that's gets a use of force every other month, and that's kind of their pattern. But now this one month, they've had five uses of force. We'll get an alert of that so that we can reach out to them, maybe provide some coaching or figure out if there's some mental health issues going on, if they need services from the city above and beyond to help them, uh, do their job. Or they all might be righteous uses of force, uh, and he need, he or she needs nothing. But what this does, this takes a system that is currently with binders and on paper and condenses it down to computer and software.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven, thank you, Chief. Item number seven is consider approval of a new job description for a digital evidence and media specialist in the police department's Criminal Investigation Division as approved in the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget and assign it to a pay grade of one oh eight at the city's salary, uh, table with an effective start date or the sec, excuse me, an effective date of October the fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Mayor and Council, the police department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for a new job description for a digital evidence and media specialist. The digital evidence and media specialist will be responsible for collecting photographic and video evidence and downloading it to the video management system before disseminating such evidence as required or requested under the Freedom of Information Act. The incumbent will also collect and disseminate audio recordings such as nine-one-one calls as required and requested. Additionally, this position will maintain an online social media presence to inform, educate and engage with the community while broadening outreach, building relationships and promoting public safety. The position was requested and approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual budget. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one oh eight of the city's salary table as approved by council in twenty sixteen. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Chief Gibson's here as well.
Anybody?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of a new job description for a crime analyst in the police department's Criminal Investigations Division as approved in FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget and assign to it a pay grade of one oh nine of the city's salary table with an effective date of October fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Mayor and Council, the police department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for a new job description for a crime analyst. The crime analyst will compile, maintain, analyze and track crime information to aid in determining patterns and trends. The incumbent will also provide technical, analytical and investigative assistance locally, statewide and nationally to police investigators and other law enforcement agents. This position was requested and approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual budget. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one oh nine of the city's salary table approved by council in twenty sixteen. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Chief Gibson is here as well.
How come one of them is in pay grade one oh eight and one of them's in pay grade one oh nine?
They're significantly different in the, um, requirements for the position. A bachelor's degree is required for the crime analyst.
Okay, that was my, my next question. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other dis- discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of ordinance number nine eight eight two one, amending part fifteen, traffic and vehicles, chapter nine, turning movements, uh, section fifteen dash nine oh seven, method of giving hand signals in chapter sixteen, bicycles, section fifteen dash sixteen oh three, obedience to traffic control devices, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Uh, Mayor and Council, what this ordinance does is it provides for changes to, uh, the hand signals and, uh, obedience to traffic control devices, uh, in regards to individuals operating a bicycle. Uh, these changes, uh, reflects current state law that goes into effect November the first. This just puts us in line with, uh, upcoming, uh, state law changes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number ten is consider approval of ordinance number nine eight nine two one, amending part seventeen, utilities, chapter two, garbage and refuge collection and section seventeen dash two oh one, definitions in section seventeen dash two oh seven, uh, contracting with private services, providing for severability and providing for a repealer.
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this changes to our ordinances that would allow private companies to contract, uh, with residents for the purposes of picking up and removing recyclables. Uh, the first thing we had to do was actually have a definition of what a recyclable is and separate that from garbage. That's the first thing that we did. And then we added, uh, what the company would provide, the container in which to hold the recyclable. Um, and it is for, uh, front-of-the-home pickup, not curbside pickup. If any questions I can answer.
Okay.
Do we have somebody looking to do this, provide this service?
It's my understanding that there is, yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
I got a flyer a month ago.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is, uh, excuse me, item number eleven is consider, uh, approval of ordinance number nine nine zero two one, amending part twelve, chapter three, article B, uh, division twelve, section twelve dash three two one through twelve dash three two three of the Moore City Code by removing the outdoor storage as an incidental use, removing the automotive and equipment, uh, light, uh, eating establishments, drive-ins, gasoline sales, light use units classification from being permitted, uh, by right and adding the, the same use unit classifications as permitted on review under C three general ser, uh, commercial district, providing for severability and providing for repealer. That's mouthful.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we've recently had some inquiries about, um, car washes and gas stations in C three. Um, these have been allowed in C three, uh, ever since the two thousand update to our Moore zoning code. Uh, but since that time, the city has, um, grown with neighborhoods having their entrance ways from arterial roadways with C three zoning at the entrance of neighborhoods. Um, as these, uh, situations have come to light, um, it could be concerning, uh, with the auto-oriented uses being that close to residential. I have, um, spoken with the city manager about this, and, uh, he suggested to come to the council to see if he would be interested in changing, um, the code. Uh, so what we've done is remove the outdoors, outside storage as an incidental use upon approval of the community development director, and we've removed that entirely from the code. Um, I don't generally approve, um, outdoor stores as incidental use in C three. Um, so, um, there's really no reason to have that in the code. The other uses that I've identified are, um, auto-related. Um, they do include car washes, oil changes, um, the eating establishment drive-ins, which would be something like a Sonic, um, and gasoline sales, uh, light, which would be your typical gas station. All of those uses generate, um, a lot of, um, sound and, um, trash, uh, with those uses. Um, having them so close to neighborhoods might not be the best approach. Uh, could lead, tend to, uh, have land use conflicts. Um, so the idea is to remove those as a use by right and insert them into a use on review. Uh, that way, the, uh, planning commission and council could review each individual case as they come up. Um, the pros on this is that, uh, we are tightening up the zoning code to prevent some, um, unsightly, um, businesses and potentially land use conflicts around some of our residential areas. Um, the cons on this is that these uses have been allowed in C three for many years, and, uh, we do have people inquiring about some of these uses currently, um, by changing the zoning code, um, that would potentially generate some, uh, concerns and complaints from the development community. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Would it still remain C three? Just, it'd be reviewed?
Yes, it would still remain uses allowed in C three. Uh, so the zoning would not change. It's just what is allowed within the zoning. Uh, so a lot that would be C three today, um, if this is enacted, um, they would, these uses, the three that I've identified, would have to go through a planning commission and city council review to be accepted. Um...
So it wouldn't change the usage, it would just approve that we would just be approving the usage?
It would require that the automotive usages have to be individually approved for each application.
Right, but we wouldn't have to do a rezoning?
No.
Or, uh, cause it would remain a C three, we would just approve the, the business?
It, it would be a use on review, so you're not actually rezoning the lot. You're asking for specific permission to have that use there.
Okay.
If that's approved, then that runs with the property. So, um, it, once it is, uh, zoned with the permissive use, that stays with the property regardless of who the owner or user is.
So now what about properties that were zoned C three in the past that maybe when they came to council, cause I can think of one, um, that we approved for a gas station that hasn't been developed yet? Would we then have to review that one as well, or is that kind of grandfathered in?
Um, no, so it would not be grandfathered in. Um, you, we would have to come back to council for review. Um, and the only caveat on that is anything that was approved with a P U D, uh, that's different. So, those uses are not included in our discussion today.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Well, I would make a motion that we approve the amendment.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion on this? Billy, how do you feel about this? You got more experience on rezonings than anybody here.
No, it's, this one's really special too because it's right in front of my neighborhood. But, uh, um, I, I mean, this is something that we've needed to do for a long time, uh, to where that we could, in certain applications, there can be additional qualifications that can apply. And so I'm, I'm totally in favor of it.
Okay, sounds good. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item passes. Item number twelve is receive and approve updates to the city's emergency operations plan.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Uh, we are before you this evening with the annual review of the emergency operations plan. Uh, that should have been provided to you on the server as a separate document, uh, simply because of its size. Uh, you will find on page five, there is a record of what we've, uh, changed or proposed to change. Most of them are, uh, fairly simple, uh, updates and wording, updates in, uh, how we do things, that sort of thing. Uh, really, the only major changes to the plan this year, uh, was that we took a very in-depth look at the health and medical annex. Uh, it's a little different this year with COVID, uh, and some of the experience we have with the, uh, epidemic and pandemic planning. Uh, surprisingly, that didn't change all that much, but a, uh, looking at the annex, uh, revealed that, that it, uh, it was, it was in need of a, of a refresh and, and a little different, uh, thinking, uh, in terms of some of the scenarios that could occur. Um, each of the annexes have someone that's responsible for them. Uh, a lot of the annexes are my responsibility to keep updated, uh, but some of the others fall to the other department heads. Uh, for instance, the law enforcement annex, uh, is the responsibility of the police chief and so on. Um, each of those, uh, people responsible for the annexes have, uh, agreed with the changes and have signed that. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll certainly be, uh, willing to answer, try and answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
No, second to motion.
Thank you both.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Any other, uh, discussion on this item? I just wanna say thank you again for all the work you put in on this.
Appreciate all the work.
Probably a few people up here on this council that's actually read that a couple of times, and I do appreciate the work, cause it is intense. So with that being said, would you call for the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is consider authorizing staff to solicit bids for the Station Recreation and Aquatic Center Annual Janitorial Services Contract.
Mayor and Council, Parks and Recreation Department requests that this item be tabled for a future meeting.
Oh, tabled, okay.
Make a motion, we tabled item thirteen.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please, for tabling?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries, uh, item is tabled, actually. Item number fourteen is consider acceptance of a proposal in the amount of three thousand, six hundred dollars per parcel from Pinnacle Consulting Management Group to provide right-of-way acquisition services for the Eastern Avenue, uh, project with Southeast Fourth Street to Southeast Nineteenth Street.
Mayor and Council, uh, we're now in a position where we're ready to go ahead and start acquiring the right-of-way that's needed for the, um, Eastern Avenue project from Southeast Fourth Street to Southeast Nineteenth Street. There are sixteen parcels that, uh, are, um, have property that we need to obtain, uh, for this particular project. Um, the proposal that Pinnacle provided, uh, indicates that, um, uh, if there are multiple, or if there are multiple parcels that have the same owner, and we have that in several of these, um, where, uh, then they would only charge us the thirty-six hundred dollars even though there are three parcels associated with that lot. We're anticipating that we would use them maybe on a total of about eight, eight total parcels for, uh, helping us, uh, um, obtain the right-of-way for this particular project, and we would recommend that you approve their, uh, approve the agreement.
Now, what is it they do? They facilitate buying it?
They, they go ahead and, and, um, they'll, they'll do the title work. Um, they'll go ahead and do all the written correspondence. Um, as we go forward to acquire, they'll put together offer packets after we have the opportunity to review them, um, and, and provide all of the documentation, and then, uh, make the offers on behalf of the city.
Are they the ones that recommended the thirty-six hundred dollars?
Yes, that's their standard price. That's what they charge us. Uh, that's the same price that they have. Uh, that, we're using them on Fourth Street, and that's just their standard price.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Oh, you wanted to do that one, okay.
Do number three.
Okay. I was just gonna skip it. Okay, at this time, item number three, we will receive a report from Select Actuarial Services and accept the annual actuarial report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I believe that Betsy Southworth is available now.
Okay.
I, I, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
My apologies for, um, earlier. Perfect. Um, then I'll go ahead. Um, I believe you have, um, a copy of a presentation that we've provided that highlights the results of our study. This is an annual analysis that we do for the city each year, um, to review the exposures related to the health benefits program, workers' compensation and automobile with general liability exposures. Um, there's two main parts to this analysis that we do. One piece is, um, what's known as the reserve study. Um, and that, the purpose of that part is to estimate the outstanding losses for all claims that have occurred through June. Second piece of our study is what's known as a loss forecast, and that's to estimate the total cost in the current fiscal. If you look at page three of the presentation shows the results of that rene, reserve analysis part of our study. Um, so we are currently estimating that for all claims that have happened through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, the outstanding losses are just under two point three million dollars, so two million, two hundred ninety-four thousand by the different, um, exposures, health, workers' compensation, liability and other. You know, see, the workers' compensation is certainly the biggest piece of that pie chart, and that's, um, pretty typical, well, workers' compensation claims generally stay open longer than the other lines. Um, page four then is showing a comparison of the results of this year's study compared to where we were last year, and you can see by line and then also down at the bottom there, um, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, outstanding losses were a little under two point five million, and now we're just under two point three million. So there has been a decrease, some good experience over the past year, especially for workers' compensation. Okay, and then slide five is just going to show the changes since the prior report, um, for health benefits specifically, um, the nineteen-twenty year came in a little bit higher than we projected. Um, and then for twenty twenty-one as well, um, claim payments have been a little higher than we expected, so ultimate costs for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year are up somewhat. Um, I did wanna point out that most of those have, uh, claims have already been paid. There is only about seven hundred thousand dollars outstanding for the health benefits program. And then on slide six, those results have been, uh... And then on slide six, those results have been in line with our expectations or even somewhat better than we expected. Reported losses for workers' compensation are down about two hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. And then for liability, it's been very stable over the past year with a decrease of just nineteen thousand. So that's really the result. On slide seven, we estimate the total cost for all claims that will happen in the current fiscal year, so between July first, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, will be six million eight hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. And again, this is a budgeting number, so the city has an idea of what those ultimate costs will be, even though you won't necessarily pay for all those claims in the next fiscal year. That's what the ultimate cost will be once the claims are closed and paid. And then slide seven, just showing how that's broken down by the different lines of business. Health certainly is going to be the biggest piece of that forecast. If you look then at slide eight, that's showing a comparison of the forecast for the health program. We're comparing back to where we were a year ago, so from the twenty twenty report, you can see the monthly employee count and the cost per employee, and then the total forecast. In the middle is our current estimate, and then the column on the right is showing the twenty-two, twenty-three forecast. Monthly cost for the current fiscal year is just over eighteen hundred, so up just a little bit over where we were last year. And some of that is just due to medical inflationation. Like I mentioned, it's last year from twenty dollars and forty-five cents per thousand dollar payroll to twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents. So total forecast estimate for the twenty-one, twenty-two year is five hundred fourteen thousand per worker's compensation. And then the same slide for liability shows how stable results have been for the city for liability this past year. Our estimate of the cost per thousand dollar payroll is essentially flat. We were at four dollars and sixty-eight cents a year ago, and this year we're at four dollars and seventy-one cents. So those costs are really staying very stable for the city. Slide eleven then just summarizes the results again of this study. You have the reserve, those outstanding dollars, and then we have your total forecast for the twenty-one, twenty-two period of about six point eight million, and projected for one more year is just over seven million. Then the final slide twelve, that's just a reference slide for you with some definitions that we use in our report and some, some of the questions about what some of those items mean.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did have one question. When we're forecasting claims, do we, for work comp, auto, and general liability, do we base that on frequency, past frequency claims with any severity claims included in there? Or do we mainly just forecast based on the, the frequency claims of the past?
Um, we look at both frequency and severity for those two lines. You know, it's a, and, um, and it's really a combination of the two. How big have claims been over the past, and we're looking at your historic data to help us project where we think things will fall in the future.
Sure, no, I appreciate, I know trying to forecast the severity claims next to impossible, but I didn't know if we factored some severity in there or we just built on the frequency claims from the previous two or three years, so thank you.
Sure, yeah, and we look back, you know, about ten years when we're looking at what the historic experience has been.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And just a reminder for the mayor and council, these numbers are used in our, in our annual audit.
Perfect. I make a motion to approve.
All right.
The annual report.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is, is the consent docket. For, oh, I better read that off. We'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item fifteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of seven hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars, seventy cents.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket?
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item sixteen is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of one million, one hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars, twenty-eight cents, with eight hundred two thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars, eighty-seven cents of the total health claims to be funded by stop-loss reimbursement.
Most approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote on that, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number seventeen is Citizens Forum for Items Not on the Agenda. Is item A, is anyone like to speak that's not signed up? Okay. Item B, any items from the city council or trust these members?
So I have one request, had a call from a resident that asked several questions about the discount on the water bill, based on age and, and income and everything. And she asked the question as to how long it had been since we had reviewed the threshold. And so I'd like to request that we begin that review process, so.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, item C is any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Uh, mayor and council, I'd like to offer congratulations to the police department for winning the Caring for the Community Award from Channel Nine. The piece ran last Friday night on the news. And one of the things that really was good to hear from the people from Channel Nine that came out the last few months, they'd gotten nominations for several of our police officers. So instead of just giving it to one or two officers, they decided to give it to the entire department. So congratulations to Chief Gibson and the police department.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Okay, item eighteen is executive session. Checkson three oh seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in the executive session to discuss the following item. Item A is discuss and consider a settlement offer for parcel number nine point one for property acquisition related to the construction and maintenance of the Southeast Fourth Street Railroad underpass project and authorize staff to proceed as directed in executive session as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash three.
Make a motion, we're convened the executive session.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. We're convened executive session. Thank you for coming.